Welcome to the second executive council meeting of this new council. I probably won't keep count all the way through, it's going to get to a very high number. I just want to say this meeting is being recorded and it is being livestreamed via the council's website. There is no fire alarm set for today, so if it does go off, quickly run out that direction, or that direction depending on your position in the room. Members should be mindful that the high performing loop system is sensitive to any type of noise in the chamber. Ambient sound from the chamber immediately prior to the meetings and during open sessions may be picked up by the loop. And therefore councillors should conduct private conversations outside of the chamber. The loop will be muted at the close of the meeting. When invited to speak, you should press the button on your microphone unit to make it live. Please speak directly into the microphone and press the button again to switch it off once you have finished speaking. There is only the ability for two, maybe three microphones to work at a time, so if you forget yours then other people can't speak. So if you can try to remember, if you don't, people quite quickly point at you and start talking about the microphone. Just to add fun to the day, there's going to be a slight change to the agenda. And I would like to propose to change the agenda order so that the items can be considered in the following order. Exemption to contract regulations for Lincolnshire Community Equipment Services. Then the review of the financial performance. Then the re-procurement of the occupational health contract. And finally, I wish, the local government reorganisation feedback on proposals. Is everybody in agreement with that? A nod is fine apparently. So on to the agenda proper then, item number one, apologies for absence, Rachel.
Thank you Leader, we have apologies from councillor Oliver, Executive Councillor for Children's Services, and we have apologies from Debbie Barnes, Chief Executive.
Lovely, thank you. Item number two, declarations of members' interests. That is to say ones that have not formally been mentioned before. Are there any declarations of members' interests? I don't see any. So thirdly, announcements by the leader, executive councillors and executive directors. I've got two things to say. Despite being a Tory, I just want to take notice of Norman Tebbit. He was an extraordinary politician and somebody that had a very, very eventful life. And he passed away unfortunately yesterday, so I just wanted to mention Norman Tebbit. And a bit closer to home, although he's just had an eye operation and he needs his wife to drive him around everywhere. Mike Chain is here today on his first wedding anniversary. So I'd just like to commend him for his commitment and his wife's commitment. Because I don't think at your first wedding anniversary you should be driving your new husband to council meetings. But congratulations, Michael. Are there anybody else that would like to make a statement? Councillor Steve Clegg.
Thank you Chairman. Last week saw the government's 10-year health plan for England published, with its focus on shifting care from hospitals to communities, harnessing digital innovation and prioritising prevention. It offers a promising vision for Lincolnshire's adult care and public health services. These aims align with our efforts to address health inequalities and improve outcomes for all our residents, from younger people with complex needs to those requiring long-term care. Lincolnshire County Council has been leading work with the NHS to develop community and primary care partnerships. And we see neighbourhood health services as a key opportunity to build this. However, delivering these ambitions requires addressing significant challenges. Rural communities such as those in Lincolnshire face deprivation that is often less visible, but just as pressing as in urban areas. The plan's emphasis on digital tools and data-driven interventions could enhance service delivery. But the divide must be, the digital divide must be bridged to prevent widening health inequalities. Our collaboration with the University of Lincoln to map digital exclusion areas across the county underscores our commitment to ensuring equitable access. The health and social care sectors are under strain from rising demand, workforce challenges and increased financial pressures, including the recent rise in employers' national insurance contributions. While the plan's goals are ambitious, they require realistic funding, clear guidance and robust government support to succeed. We remain committed to our statutory duties and public health responsibilities, working closely with NHS Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board and the Department of Health and Social Care to ensure the plan meets our county's unique needs, particularly in rural access and support for vulnerable residents. In line with Reform UK's principles of value for money, cutting waste and common sense approaches, we will prioritise high-impact services and minimise inefficiencies. The King's Fund rightly notes that the plan's success hinges on local leadership and adequate resources. We urge the government to provide the necessary tools, funding and flexibility to make this vision a reality for the people of Lincolnshire. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Andy Gutherson, I think you.
Thank you Leader. Most people probably heard this on the news this morning, but overnight the Department for Transport made a number of announcements regarding funding for transport schemes. Included in that announcement was confirmation of the funding for the North Hycam Relief Road. It is still subject to the final business case that needs to be submitted to the DFT for final approval. And that is dependent on the outcome of the North Hycam public inquiry which is taking place as we speak. And hopefully that is a further indication of the commitment of the government to fund that scheme. Thank you.
Thank you very much, does anybody else have anything to say from the executive or the executive directors? Okay, moving on to item four then, minutes of the previous meeting. This is to confirm the minutes of the previous meeting as a correct record. Can I have a proposer?
Thank you Chairman, more than happy to move those minutes.
I'm happy to second them.
Thank you councillors, kind of a show of hands then on those minutes. Right, I'll sign them then. Right, I'll sign them at the end apparently. Okay, so item five is to consider of an exemption information. I move that under section 100a of the Local Government Act 1972, the press and the public are to be excluded from the meeting for the following agenda item on the grounds that it is considered to contain exempt information as defined in paragraph three of part one of schedule 12a of the Local Government Act as amended. Can I seek approval from the executive please? That is carried, thank you.
Good morning, Leader.
Welcome back, everybody. We are live streamed again. So, item seven then on the agenda is the review, oh, no, five? Sorry. Oh, yes, an odd number, it's got seven next to it on here. That's okay. So, item five is to review the financial performance 2024/2025. Michelle, there you are.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, the report sets out our year-end position and explains variances on our revenue and capital budgets. It makes proposals on the use of carryforward on those variances and also provides an update on our reserves position and our prudential indicators. So, table one of the report on page fourteen is a summary of our revenue budget for the 2024/25 financial year with an overall position of an underspend on our general fund of 9.8 million, which was made up of underspending on our operating expenditure of just over 7 million and additional funding received that was over budget of 2.7 million. The report provides some detailed explanations of variances against each service and how outterm compares to the quarterly forecasts that were presented at executive during the year. During the year, we had forecasted an overspend on our service budgets with explanation of the pressures within those services. We did highlight through the year that we anticipated these pressures could be met by the contingency that we held, and that is the final position that we're now reporting. In terms of schools, the dedicated schools budget has overspent by 2.4 million, and the school section in Appendix A of the report breaks down this overspend and gives explanations. Any school budget balances are ring-fenced and will be carried forward automatically. And the overspend highlighted on the high needs block, excluding special schools, has been offset using reserves from the dedicated schools grant, which has now been depleted. This is a national issue, and the government has made some proposals about producing the schools bill later in the year to consider send reforms. In terms of revenue balances to carry forward, our financial regulations set out the process for carrying forward our revenue underspend, and the Appendix C, Table C1 on page sixty, sets out this process and the proposal for the use of the 9.628 million for the balance that isn't ring-fenced, which requires proposals to carry forward. The proposals in the report consider removing the overspend, carryforward in place, reimbursing the financial volatility reserve with the 1 million reduced at budget setting, and making voluntary revenue provision to reduce future borrowing costs. In terms of the capital programme, Table two on page sixteen identifies our programme delivery of 290 million during the year to improve and create assets for our service delivery. Variances on the programme are usually the result of delivery timing, and project details and impacts are included in the report. Any over and underspends on the capital programme will carry forward automatically into 2025/26. The table also sets out the sources of funding, with 175 million coming from non-borrowing sources, i.e. grants, revenue contributions, reserve funding and capital receipts. The report at Appendix D also shows the split of our reserves, with a closing balance of reserves of 196 million at year-end, which was higher than we anticipated due to additional grants and grant drawdown. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Michelle. I think we'll go to councillor Roberts from the Oversight and Scrutiny Committee, who has sat there very quietly, which is not like him.
Thank you, Leader. Members, I'm pleased to be amongst you today to present the comments that the board raised at its meeting on the twenty-sixth of June. In relation to the consideration of the council's financial performance to date, the board considered this report and resolved to unanimously endorse its contents and support its recommendations. During discussion, the board raised a number of points, which we'll try to summarise briefly for you. We began by considering the council's approach to borrowing and capital investment, given the current level of debt of 459 million and the reduced reserves position. Members questioned the prudence of continuing to borrow at this scale and sought assurance that the value and impact of the investments being made. Officers confirmed that all capital spend is underpinned by sound business cases, aligned with the Prudential Code and directed towards unlocking long-term growth opportunities, particularly in infrastructure. Turned to the council's financial resilience, the board examined the use of reserves. There was concern about sustainability, but officers provided assurance that the use of reserves was planned and externally reviewed, including for specific initiatives such as flood relief and tackling antisocial behaviour, who are also reminded that the 25 million savings target is only a baseline, and the services are preparing scenarios for more substantial reductions if needed. There was also interest in the accuracy of forecasting. Members queried why a Q3 forecast indicated an overspend while the final overturn showed a surplus. Officers explained that some contingencies were held back from Q3 to retain flexibility and were ultimately not required, leading to an improved year-end position. Education and SEND funding also received close attention. Members raised concerns about the ongoing pressure on the high needs block and the growing cost of home-to-school transport. Officers confirmed that statutory override protecting general funds remains in place until 2028, that a special schools expansion programme is already underway to help address the challenges. Waste disposal costs were scrutinised, particularly a report overspend particularly caused by outages at the energy from waste facility. Officers clarified that increased waste volumes were also a factor, and noted that contractual cost-sharing arrangements with the operator had mitigated some of the financial impact. On income generation, members welcomed a positive variance from the traffic regulation orders and highways licensing income, which had exceeded expectations and helped offset some highways maintenance costs. Lastly, the board received clarification on several other matters, including investment in carbon management schemes, the National Pay Award, a provision that had been made in advance, and the governance arrangement for bringing in external support as part of the council's efficiency programme. The leader confirmed that such arrangements would remain fully lawful and compliant with the council's constitution. Agenda, sorry, Leader. I have extra ones here, do I do these now or do I do these when we come to each area?
Just stick to the agenda items.
Right, okay. Thank you, Leader.
Don't worry, I'll come back to you. Executive members, are there any questions for Michelle? Councillor Clegg.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Michelle, for your presentation there. And actually, if I may, I'd actually like to direct this question to the Executive Director of Adult Care, who's behind me, so I'll look up at the TV screen. I'd like to draw members' attention to item nineteen on page thirty-six, if I've got that right, yes, page thirty-six, and it's in relation to overspending in mental health community support. And I've got a few questions, which, they're interrelated, so if I could put those, all three of them together, and then if, Martin, if you're happy to respond to those as a whole, I'd appreciate it. The first question, given these overspends, can you reassure the executive of the measures that will be implemented to ensure financial sustainability and minimise further increases while ensuring high-quality support for our vulnerable residents with mental health needs? Secondly, can you also tell us which overspend stem from external pressures as opposed to those areas where earlier intervention could have taken place? And finally, how does expenditure here in Lincolnshire compare to the national picture? Thank you.
So, if I can respond to those questions, so, I think it's worth noting that at the point where I arrived in Lincolnshire just over eighteen months ago, the normal way that the council presented data was to put learning disability and mental health together. So, we tended as a service to look at the two as one issue, and it became very clear very soon after I had arrived that we had a problem in terms of the budget there. At the time, the information that I was given suggested that that was a problem more in the learning disability area rather than the mental health area, and I therefore instigated a programme of work within a matter of weeks of arriving in Lincolnshire, which was very much focused on the learning disability area, and that has done a significant amount of work, and we have a much clearer view of the picture there. Over the course of the period since then, it's become clear that although we did indeed have a problem in the learning disability area, our issues in the mental health area were in fact somewhat greater. And in fact, one of the things that have also pushed us now to do is to be much more effective in our benchmarking activity to compare where Lincolnshire is from a mental health perspective compared to other authorities. Previously, we had lots of data comparing where we were from a working-age adults, which tends to be mental health and learning disability put together, but we didn't particularly interrogate the data in terms of mental health specifically. We now have that clearer data. So, in answer to your questions, councillor Clegg, if I partly do them in reverse order, so, how much of this is national and how much of this is local? Nationally, we have seen a significant growth in demand for mental health services, both in adult social care and indeed in the NHS, and this seems to be particularly associated with a sort of post-Covid world. In part, and partly in response to that, the NHS has had a national programme to increase investment in mental health, and to some extent, spending more from the NHS perspective on mental health and making sure that people with mental health illness are identified and supported, to an extent, will increase demand for those services because we're finding people who had a need but perhaps were being overlooked before. So, it's a combination of, there's very definitely a growth in demand, but also our NHS colleagues by spending more on mental health are identifying more of the demand that already existed but wasn't being addressed. However, it has become clear, as we've looked at the benchmarking data, that the rate of increase in Lincolnshire has been quite a lot faster than it has been nationally. And indeed, the latest data that we've been able to identify suggests that whereas five years ago, Lincolnshire was broadly an average spender per head of population, working-age adult population in mental health, we have now become a top decile spender. So, having been in a position five years ago of being pretty typical of the country as a whole, our level of spend is now much more like inner-city Manchester in terms of mental health expenditure, and that is not what you would expect to find. And that does suggest that there are some local issues that have been driving this. We've been looking at this quite carefully over the last few months. We've identified there is some evidence that the service which is delivered on our behalf by the Lincolnshire Partnership Foundation Trust and NHS organisation behalf by the Lincolnshire Partnership Foundation Trust and NHS organisation, there have been some evidence that there has been a degree of risk aversion creeping into the work that they've been doing, so that in effect, they have been over prescribing care for individuals. I should be really clear that in the world of social care, over prescription is a bad thing, not simply because it spends money that needn't be spent, but more care is generally bad for people. We're not in a position where more of a good thing is a better thing, more of a good thing is actually a worse thing. So there's some evidence of risk aversion leading to over prescription. There's also some evidence that we've been losing the sharp focus on adult social care and Care Act eligibility in the team that is deployed within the NHS, and it has been more driven by clinical need and therefore losing sight of the adult social care focus. And then also, it's become clear that the level of market management that should be being done of identifying what future need and therefore what future capacity should be, has not been as robust as it should be. And therefore, we've been in a position of having to spot purchase from what is available rather than shaping the market to ensure that the market provides what we're going to need in advance. So we're taking a number of steps about this. We have undertaken and brought in some experts to help us analyse the data, so we have a much clearer understanding of the demand and the nature of it and the longevity of it. And I'd say it's very clear that this is an issue going back at least five years. We are now being much more active in supporting the social work practice of the staff in LPFT. Previously, there had been quite a gap had developed between those staff and the social work staff in the county council. We've been seeking to narrow that gap to ensure consistency of practice. We have, we're making sure that there's much more rigorous review of placement requests so that as the staff in LPFT recommend that a person needs a particular level or type of care, that we are now reviewing those cases much more rigorously on an individual basis to ensure that people really do need the care that is being prescribed for them. And we are developing a much stronger forecasting of demand so that we can not only make sure that the market is available to deliver the care that is required at a price that is reasonable and affordable, but also to help us to think much more in terms of prevention and avoidance, to work with our communities to reduce the demand for adult social care for people with mental health issues and thereby not only enable people to have a better quality of life, but also to reduce the pressure on the budget for the council. So there's a range of steps that are in place.
Thank you, Martin, for that very thorough explanation. So I take from it that moving forward, we will be able to sort of maintain financial sustainability and minimise future increases for the reasons you've stated, and obviously at the same time make sure those people that really need this high quality support receive it. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Thank you, councillor Clegg. Any other questions from the executive, please? I'll take that as a note. Can I have a proposal then for the recommendations on pages eleven and twelve? Councillor Caton? And a second. Councillor Chain? Thank you. Can I therefore have a vote on these recommendations? That's carried, thank you. Michelle, I'd like to thank you for your report as well. That was very good and very thorough. Okay, item six then on the agenda is reprocurement of the occupational health contract. Over to Tony, where are you? There you are.
Thank you, Leader. Good afternoon, oh, good morning, nearly afternoon, everybody. Okay, so the report you have before you is around the reprocurement of the occupational health contract for the council. You'll note that the contract expires on the thirty first of March next year and we don't have any further options to extend. And so essentially, we need to go out to reprocurement. So the paper primarily is around the approval of the reprocurement and also the delegation of the authority to the Deputy Chief Executive and Director of Resources and in discussion with the Executive Council for Resources, councillor Caton. So just very briefly, in terms of any other alternatives that we could have considered, technically, not really alternatives, but we would have been doing nothing, which would have disabled, as I would have thought, quite significantly as an organisation and/or insourcing, which we don't really have the expertise as an organisation to do that. So the reason we need the occupational health contract really is primarily to make sure we comply with our legal obligations, those primarily being Health and Safety at Work Act nineteen seventy four and the Equality Act two thousand and ten. As you will imagine, it includes a whole host of different types of requirements, whether that be medical assessments, health surveillance, whether it's substances hazardous to health, where are the employees in things like Lynx Lab, whether it's ill health retirement applications and just general medical evaluations, alongside just other areas around fitness for duty and the management of long term sickness absence and suchlike. In the last financial year, the council spent in the region of around two hundred and sort of seventy one thousand pounds for the occupational health. And generally, we tend to fall within that sort of budget because some of it is recharged to our schools. What we are proposing as part of the new contract, once we go out to tender, is that we look at more efficient ways in terms of the way that we offer things like appointments through things like Microsoft Teams or and suchlike, so we can reduce travel time and costs like that, as well as perhaps being a bit more selective when it comes to some of the more optional services that are not part of the core offer and whether or not they offer value for money in terms of that. What I'm going to do now is going to hand over to my colleague Leanne, who's going to sort of talk about the commercial side. Thank you.
Thank you. In terms of the commercial approach, occupational health has, it is a challenging market. There are very few professionals working in the occupational health sector and many do work for multiple providers. Lincolnshire itself is also a challenge for occupational health professionals to travel to, so we're mitigating this risk by providing more of the locations and the premises for the appointments and also creating more virtual appointments, which will hopefully increase the level of competition. We did conduct pre-market engagement in November of twenty twenty four and received seven responses, which was encouraging. We do intend to utilise a framework approach, so we are looking to use the ESPO occupational health framework. It's an established framework and the majority of the providers from the pre-market engagement are on that framework. We will also use a further competition as a route to market. It was deemed the most suitable route due to the fact that the framework itself assesses the supplier's capability and capacity in order to get onto the framework. The terms and conditions have also been agreed and accepted by the suppliers on the framework and an open route was considered to provide a high risk of receiving no bids. Previously, when we've been out to tender for occupational health, we've received two bids previously and then before that it was just the one bid. The contract itself offers no guarantee of volumes and there are no minimum volumes within the contract. It will be flexible to allow the council to switch off services it no longer needs during the contract term, and also we can add new or improved services to the contract. This will be managed through the contract having no guaranteed volumes, but we do also have partial termination clauses and also termination without cause clauses within the contract. As the market is challenging, the contract requires business continuity plans to be shared and tested at least annually. Recruitment and retention of suppliers will be tested during the procurement process and also tested throughout the contract management meetings. Also, where there are issues that are beyond rectification within the contract, we can terminate or we can partially terminate where necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Leanne and Tony. Cause clauses, that's not easy to say, is it? Thank you for the report. I'll now hand over to councillor Roberts from the OSMB.
Thank you, Leader. Excuse me. The Board considered the report and following a constructive discussion, we unanimously endorsed the report and its recommendations. Several important points were raised during our debate on the procurement strategy. Members asked why the council had opted to use the Eastern Shire Purchasing Organisation framework rather than going out to open tender, with some suggesting this could have encouraged more local providers to bid. Officers explained that a prior information notice had been issued to test the market interest and following this, the ESPO framework was identified as a most cost effective and flexible route, while still allowing for subcontracting opportunities that could support Lincolnshire based organisations. Officers also clarified that in rural areas such as Lincolnshire, most occupational health professionals tend to operate with larger organisations. This means that contracting directly with individuals is often unviable. On service delivery, members reflected on past delays, particularly with medical checks for fire and rescue staff, and asked how these issues could be addressed. Officers confirmed that under the new contract, the number of key performance indicators would be significantly reduced from forty to fifteen, with a sharper focus on timelines and delivery standards. We also heard about plans to improve clinical facilities and the introduction of virtual consultations to increase flexibility and reduce delays. Members raised questions about the clinical effectiveness of virtual appointments in an occupational health context. Officers advised that these are increasingly the preferred method, especially in the fire and rescue service, as most assessments are conversation based and not requiring physical examination. Continuity planning was also another area aboard welcome confirmation that the contract includes a partial termination clause and fallback mechanism such as use of alternative frameworks or in-house operations if needed. Suppliers will also be required to test their business continuity plans annually. Finally, we discussed equality and fairness in contract delivery. Members asked how the council would comply with the Equality Act two thousand and ten while ensuring fairness across the workforce. Officers confirmed the service will support reasonable adjustment for disabled employees, consistent with the Council's responsibilities under the public sector equalities duty. In summary, the Board was satisfied with the proposed approach and welcomed the steps being taken to improve service quality, resilience and accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Roberts. I'm glad that the Oversight and Scrutiny membership board noted the slight issue about having Zoom and Teams meetings and virtual meetings. Having been through occupational health myself with two, well now new knees, I do think that we need to consider in-person meetings. In many, many cases, it's good to get out even when you don't really want to and it's good to see other people and that's all part of being scooped up in that occupational health. So are there any questions from the other executives? Councillor Caton?
Thank you very much. I just want a clarification within the contract that are there any costs related to switching off without clause?
No, because it's a volumes based contract and there's no guaranteed volumes, there's no cost for not putting anything through the contract itself. It's just purely you pay for what you use, so it's based on rates that are bid back during the procurement process against each individual service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councillor Kelly?
Apologies, I may have missed it, but what's the duration of the contract and is there price reviews on the contract?
The contract's for a four year term and there's indexation clauses after year two. So indexation applies after the second year against those rates that are against all of the services that are within the basket.
Anyone else?
So effectively then, it's not, but it's kind of a pay as you go type of thing. When you need something, you get it. And due to other contracts that we've been dealing with since we've come into power, I think phrases like break clauses and different approaches to clauses like a four year term, I think they've started to come through a little bit now, which is encouraging to see. And any further contracts that come up, I'd encourage that, I'd continue to encourage that view and approach. Thank you.
So I invite the executive to vote on this then. It's on page seventy three, again, the recommendations one and two. Hopefully, you've got them in front of you. Can I have a proposal and second up for these? Councillor McGonigal will propose. And councillor Gibson too, second. And can I have a vote? All those in favour? Carried, that's carried, thank you. Have a vote. And finally, but not least, item seven, feedback on local government reorganisation proposals. Thank you very much, Leanne. Tony? Well, Debbie. Yes, I'll hand over to Claire.
Thank you, Leader, and good morning meeting. So the report to executive provides the meeting with a summary of the local government reorganisation process to date, and following feedback from the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government asks for agreement and support in the development of one business case proposal for Lincolnshire for submission on the twenty eighth of November of this year. So just by way of background, on fifth of February twenty twenty five, the Minister of State wrote to the leaders of Lincolnshire County Council, the City, District and Borough Councils, North and North East Lincolnshire Councils, formally inviting them to submit proposals for a single tier of local government for the area. The letter set out the statutory basis for the invitation and also the criteria against which the proposals would be considered. A proposal should seek to achieve for the whole of the Greater Lincolnshire area concerned in the establishment of a single tier of local government. Unitary local government must be the right size to achieve efficiencies, improve capacity and also withstand financial shocks. Unitary structures must prioritise the delivery of high quality and sustainable public services to citizens, so our childrens, our adults and our healthcare systems. The proposal should show how councils in the area have sought to work together in coming to a view that meets local needs and is informed by local views. That new unitary structures must support devolution arrangements and finally, that new unitary structures should enable stronger community engagement and also deliver genuine opportunity for neighbourhood empowerment. Lincolnshire County Council submitted an interim plan with two options for a single tier of local government following debate at full council on the twenty first of March this year. Feedback has been received by the Greater Lincolnshire Chief Execs from MHCLG, this was on the third of June. And whilst the feedback has not requested that any of the interim plans submitted and put forward are withdrawn, there are clear expectations that local authorities in the Lincolnshire areas continue to work together to ensure effective collaboration across all councils and to encourage the continuation of building strong relationships and also agreeing ways of working, including around effective data sharing and also the assumptions that the business case proposals will be based upon. So the paper is asking that the executive please consider the two options submitted to government on the twenty first of March for a single tier of local government for Lincolnshire, and also that the executive agrees to take one option forward in the development of a single business case proposal for Lincolnshire. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, Claire. I now ask councillor Roberts to give his report from her assembly.
Thank you, Leader. At our meeting, we received a detailed presentation from officers and following a wide ranging and considered debate, the Board agreed to endorse the report and in particular, to support the recommendation of adopting option one. A number of key points were raised during the discussion. First, on the clarity of the two options presented, some members felt that neither quite captured Lincolnshire's unique geography. quite captured Lincolnshire's unique geography or the need of its communities, or those of our neighbours. There were also questions around the report's interpretation of Cota minosity. Officers explained that alignment was assessed not just by council boundaries but in relation to public services like health, policing and fire. We were also reminded that the government's 500,000 population benchmark is not an absolute rule. Members also raised concerns about governance, particularly where a single Lincolnshire while authority might feel too large or remote for residents. Officers gave assurances that local voice and representation will be at the heart of the engagement plans, with town and parish councils playing a key role. On service delivery, the board stressed the importance of protecting critical services, particularly in adult social care, children's services, highways, fire and rescue. Officers confirmed that option one offered the best opportunity to retain integrated delivery and organisation resilience, avoiding the disaggregation challenges seen elsewhere. The need to safeguard the stability of the fire and rescue services specifically acknowledged. Financially, efficiency was another area of interest. Members were keen to understand what levels of savings might be achieved through changes to staffing, assets or contracts. Officers confirmed these would be detailed fully in the final business case. We also touched on the collaboration and data sharing. Officers confirmed that frameworks are being developed to ensure joint working with all local authorities, including those not currently pursuant reorganisation. Members raised concerns about the potential for a democratic deficit if district councils were abolished. Officers confirmed that strengthening, strengthening the role of town and parish councils as a key strand of the proposals, and that a work stream is already underway. This is also being explored through the cross-party member working group established by council in May. Finally, on public engagement, officers provided reassurance that a country-wide inclusive process is being planned, with a specific focus on reaching rural areas involving communities in shaping local governance models. In summary, the board was supportive, supportive of option one, more strongly emphasising that ongoing clarity, robust public engagement and protection of the services must, must guide the next phase of the work ahead of the full business case being developed for the submission in November. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Roberts, and please pass on my thanks to the overview and scrutiny management board and all the members on it for the reports that have come in today and the, the efforts and work that's been done on that. Can I just, for clarity, ask you to explain what option one is, or would you like me to explain what option one is?
Leader, I think you, but can you, I have got it, but I think...
No, that's fine. Option one is known as the continuity option. It's basically keeping the same footprint as Lincolnshire County Council is at the moment. The other, option two, is splitting it over to the east coast, so I just wanted to clarify that so that there is no confusion going forward from your report and from the decision that we have to make today. So I now invite questions from the executive. You don't have to.
Thank you, Chairman. It's more of a comment really, and it's regarding something that councillor Roberts said with his members to do with the, the sort of services that are provided, and I'm thinking here in terms of our relationship with the integrated, Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board, and I totally agree with the, the idea of option one in that respect. And it's a shame, as I mentioned earlier, with regards to the 10-year plan, that it actually states aligning ICB, that's Integrated Care Board boundaries, with strategic authorities. And it's just a shame that the current proposed clustering, which is to cluster Lincolnshire ICB with Nottinghamshire and Derbyshire, would actually undermine this for, for Lincolnshire. And as the mayor for Greater Lincolnshire has already written to the Secretary of State to ask him to reconsider this, it doesn't sound as if he has done. I am, however, encouraged to know in the, in the 10-year plan that in due course, we might come back to where we are now. It's just a shame we don't stay where we are now, if it makes sense, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Clegg. Any other questions? Councillor Kelly?
Thank you, Leader. It's more of a comment really, and it's just reinforcing the points raised by the OSMB. You know, from a risk-based perspective, option one to me is the most sensible option, and it actually delivers what our voters wanted: efficiency, value for money and uninterrupted risk-based services. Thank you, Leader.
Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Chairman. If there's no other comments from the exec, I'll, I'll carry on. Can I just say thank you to Claire for the, the report and presenting that to us here? And thank you to OSMB for your comments and yourself as chairman presenting here today. The report before us, Chairman, is asking us to decide before the two options. The two options went forward to government, the letter came back asking us to go down to one option, and we will then need to build a business model around whichever option that is. I've been listening to OSMB and the working group, listening to comments around the county council. This decision that we are about to make and put forward, or whatever happens with local reorganisation, is probably one of the most important decisions we're going to make in this council, because it will affect every single person that lives in Lincolnshire. The biggest concern is splitting up our adult services, children's services, fire and rescue, and they're, they're the three biggest areas that I'm listening to. Any split in those services, if you split it across the middle and halve them, is invariably going to lead to a reduction in that service, because you can't split it in half and, and get to the same position. That probably is the key point for me, to suggest that we should be going forward with option one, Chairman. And for myself, I will move that we recommend option one to the executive to vote on today.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Or do I need a proposer? Are you, second up, second up? Do I have a second up for that proposal?
I'm happy to second that, Chairman.
Councillor Clegg, thank you very much. So I invite the executive to, I said it wrong last time, what is it you want me to say? Can I have votes, so can we support, can I have a vote on supporting councillor Gibson's recommendations? All those in favour, is what I was trying to remember. All those in favour?
Yes.
That's carried, thank you. So that is the council recommending option one, which is the continuity option, which is the same footprint as Lincolnshire County Council, and I just completely support councillor Gibson's comments there. Why mess with something that's excellent, is what I would say. Thank you. Well, being that there's no other business for today, I now close the meeting. Thank you all very much.